We'll call the regular meeting of the Upstate County Commission to order. We'll begin with a moment of silent meditation and prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time we'll have the reading of the minutes of the June 6, 2013 Upstate County Commission meeting.
The county commission of Upstate County, West Virginia, held their regular meeting at the courthouse annex on Thursday, June 6, 2013, at 9:00 a.m. Donnie Tenney called the meeting to order. There were President Donnie Tenney Commissioner, J.C. Rafferty Commissioner, Troy Brady Commissioner, Megan Palmeroy, County Administrator, and Jacqueline Dinklocker Secretary. The meeting began with a moment of silent meditation and prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. All motions passed unanimously unless otherwise stated. After reading of the minutes on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the commission approved the regular meeting minutes of May 30, 2013, with typographical corrections. Megan Palmeroy reviewed correspondence from the Adrian Public Service District concerning their recommendation for board member appointment. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the commission approved the appointment of Paul Spencer to the Adrian Public Service Board of Directors. Mr. Davis' term will end on October 31, 2017. The commission discussed the request from the Brooks Hill Community Group for a donation to help with the cost of hosting the Brooks Hill Community Fair on July 26 and 27, 2013. Donnie Tenney advised that the commission would look at the possible reallocation of funds for community fair events. Megan Palmeroy was requested to follow up. Megan Palmeroy provided a review of the request from Clayton Tenney, Scoutmaster, to provide acknowledgement to Alexander Mack Ellis and Seth Edward Blake, members of Boy Scouts of America, ALHAC Council 618, Troop 100, for completing requirements to attain the rank of Eagle Scout. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the commission approved and authorized the commission to sign a letter of recognition and congratulations for Mr. Ellis and Mr. Blake, else well as for Trent Gibson, Jacob Hindsmann, and Kurt Russell, who achieved the rank of Eagle Scout in 2012 and 2013. Mr. Ellis and Mr. Blake's achievements will be recognized at the Eagle Scout Court of Honor on June 17, 2013. Megan Palmeroy reviewed correspondence from Create Buchanan Representative Alyssa Lively, requesting a donation for a fundraising project. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the commission authorized the donation of a pavilion rental as requested. Megan Palmeroy reviewed correspondence from Maureen Ellis, Representative of the Office of the Secretary of State, requesting an update of public service district information. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the commission authorized Megan Palmeroy to follow up with providing the requested information. Upstate County Sheriff David Kaufman, Chief Tax Deputy Sheila Adams, appeared before the commission to discuss budget issues. Sheriff Kaufman and Ms. Adams provided a review of revisions to bring their budget into compliance. The budget revisions will be finalized and placed on next week's agenda for action. Ms. Adams reviewed the delinquent tax list and provided data concerning the status of tax collections. Sheriff Kaufman reviewed his request to hire an additional law enforcement deputy. Sheriff Kaufman advised that his request to hire a deputy prior to January 2014 is due to the training schedule of the police academy. Sheriff Kaufman advised that his budget allows for the September hire and that waiting until January 2014 would delay training at the police academy. Sheriff Kaufman amended his request to employ the officer as of September 1, 2013, instead of July 1, 2013, as he discussed at last week's meeting. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the commission approved the request for the employment of a deputy with an effective date to be either August 25 or September 8, 2013. Terry Joe Bennett, Building Permit and Flood Plane Coordinator, appeared before the commission and provided an update/status report on the response letter from Chuck Marks, Windermar Incorporated President, regarding the requested update of the conditional letter of map amendment from FEMA for the fill that was placed in the special identified flood hazard without county permits. After discussion, the commission directed Terry Joe Bennett to follow up. The commission discussed correspondence from the West Virginia Association of Counties regarding oil and gas well development and the flood plane. Terry Joe Bennett was requested to follow up with necessary changes that may be required for the Upstate County Flood Plane Ordinance. Terry Joe Bennett, Addressing Mapping Coordinator, appeared before the commission to review a road name request. Ms. Bennett advised that a third structure has been placed along a private driveway in Upstate County that will now require a name per the county ordinance. The guidelines have been followed to notify the property owners and request participation in the road naming process. Since the property owners did not submit any road name suggestions, on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the commission approved the road name of Heater Drive for a private driveway off of Hunter Ridge Road in Rock Cave. The commission reviewed the following four-year information items. Number one, correspondence from the Public Service Commission concerning the billing problems regarding West Virginia customers of First Energy. Number two, Dog Wardon Report, May 2013. Three, agendas and/or notices of meetings as listed. Number four, meeting minutes and/or financial reports as listed. Number five, meetings as listed. Number six, appointments needed or upcoming as listed. The commission approved all invoices for payment. Commission approved all vacation orders. The commission approved the following settlements as listed. The commission approved the following exoneration and/or refunds as listed. The commission approved the following consolidation of land tracts as listed. The commission approved the following property to be sold at the annual tax lien sale as listed. Tim Higgins, Upstate County resident, appeared before the commission and expressed concerns about the commission's membership and the County Commissioners Association of West Virginia and the West Virginia Association of Counties. Mr. Higgins' appearance was a follow-up to a previous meeting during which he expressed concerns about the public not having full access to all information about the organization's finances. The commission recessed at 11:15 p.m. The commission reconvened at 2:00 p.m. I'm sorry, that was 11:15 a.m. The commission met with representatives of the Office of Emergency Management and the Upstate County Fire Department's concerning radio communications. With no further business, on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the commission meeting adjourned at 3:15 p.m.
Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes as read? Not, I'd ask for a motion to be approved as such.
So moved.
All in favor say aye. Post same sign, motion carries. Well, we've got 15 minutes, Alan, before you're up, so we'll go ahead and take care of some of our other business items. You can sit back there and rest and relax. First item is discussion and approval of sheriff deputies working with J.F. Allen provide protection for road construction, project duration of July through August. And I believe, Megan, you've done some research on that with the risk pool?
I have.
What's your findings on that?
Basically, this would be J.F. Allen asking for road control from the sheriffs for some road construction they're doing. I believe it's on 33 from Buckingham Mountain Tour exits. And I talked to our risk pool just to see if they had any problems with it. They said this is something that's done, it's somewhat routine in other areas, this is the first time we would do it, but they suggested that the payroll go through the county for workers' comp purposes. So, J.F. Allen had proposed paying the deputies $40 per hour and then reimbursing the county about $5 per hour for gas, wear and tear on the vehicles, all of that. So, we still, I need to talk with J.F. Allen, I haven't been able to make contact with them yet, in terms of whether that would be agreeable, what sort of contract they would have to do that sort of work, but that is the, and it will last from July through August, it'll be on the sheriff's deputies' off time when they aren't working as sheriff's deputies.
Okay, and then the sheriff would be responsible for scheduling the deputies? I mean, that'd be something he'd have to be responsible for.
Right, well, it would be on their off time. So, he would, he's responsible for scheduling them during their work as deputies for the sheriff's department, but then this work would be on their off time. So, it's up to each deputy whether they want to take advantage of that or not.
Would there just be one at a time that would be working, or is that a two?
I believe he said there's two. I think there's usually one at the, is there only one?
Typically, there's one at each work site. If there's more than one work site, they might have the need.
Right. So, I don't know the exact number that they would like. I don't know how long the work site is. Those are things that I was hoping to go over with J.F. Allen when I talked to them, but...
I know the 17th are also starting construction beyond Cordelkins from the east of here. They saw a sign going up the 17th of June, I believe. So, Buchanan Mountain is also going to be under, they would have two work sites.
I did talk to Cindy Wetzel this morning from Lewis County where they've done that before, and she said that they just do it through their payroll and it's worked out.
Well, any, that would be up to the sheriff and the deputies to schedule, who wanted to work, and I guess they could work that out themselves as long as, and they said, the risk pool said there wouldn't be liability issues for the county for doing that?
No. The only issue they thought that could be a problem would be workers' comp. If they aren't paid through our payroll, then there might be a question, if anything should happen, as to who would pay that. So, they suggested that we do the payroll through our department so that there's no question as to who's going to be paying workers' comp if there were any sort of issue.
Okay, so, then there would be, I assume there would be all the regular deductions then, as far as the Fed Med and everything else?
Right, and that's another thing I need to talk to J.F. Allen about in terms of if they are paying 40 and then we take out that money and then the deputies would then be paid somewhere around 32, I think, per hour, or if they would be paying us about 48, we would take all FICO, Fed Med retirement, and then the deputies would get 40. So, that's something we still need to figure out in terms of the exact amount of pay, but...
Okay, well, we can work that out, so, so you gentlemen have your other comments. As long as we follow the counsel of our risk pool when running it through the county and they say that there's no liability issue on us, the cruisers would be covered during that time, even though they're working off duty. And then everything else, as far as the other issues, would be for the sheriff to determine and the deputies to work that out. So, ours is only the decision of running it through the payroll and to authorize the use of the vehicles then.
The only question I have, I see in there looking at where J.F. Allen was going to give us $5 an hour for the cruiser sitting there. I don't know whether you can have a cruiser out there running for eight hours with the air conditioning, will justify the expense of the gasoline and stuff and wearing maintenance on the cruiser, is the only thing I...
That's $5?
That's what they had on, it was $5 an hour.
Yeah, that's what they said. And cruiser sitting out there idling all day, which it will be doing in the summertime, you know what I mean? I don't know whether that'll cover the county expenses, and I think we need to do that.
And that's, you know, I think there would be a contract that we would have to sign, so that's something along with the actual payroll amount that we may be able to talk to them about to see.
Well, let's check on that too, and I don't know how we determine exactly what the fuel consumption should be for a vehicle setting for an air idling, but we're going to have to get a bunch of stuff locked in before we can approve anything anyway. So, I'd say we check that and these other issues and then we can... Because if it's not till July, you know, when it starts in July?
I think they were saying early July. We don't have a meeting next week, but I'll hopefully be able to get in touch with them and iron out all those details by the 27th, and maybe we can have an actual contract by then as well.
Okay, that sounds good. Okay, next item, discussion and approval of contracting house cleaning work with L. Jane Cutliffe of Quality Home and Office Cleaning, 911 Center and W.U. Extension Office. And I assume the second one is supposed to be the extension office, even though both of them say the comm center? They're correct?
Yes, the, yeah, the extension office would be two days a week.
Okay, so that's extension. And then would they be cleaning, of course, the comm center's not a problem as far, but they would be cleaning both of them at night? I mean, that's what it says, is that...
Right, well, they actually have to clean the office of emergency management side during the day because nobody is allowed in there when the director is not there, I believe, for security purposes. So, they would have to do that side during the day. The 911 Center, there is somebody there at all times. I think since she'd be doing the OEM side during the day, she would be there cleaning 911 also during the day when Steve Linger's also there. So, that would probably, the OEM and 911 Center would probably be during the day. The extension center would be at night.
At night, and that, there's no issues there as far as the, no one being here and their information? I mean, there's no problem there with that aspect of it?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, and we've had a terrible time trying to find somebody to help clean, haven't we?
Yes.
Have we gotten any?
We have, I believe, received two applications after posting it twice, I believe. And neither one of those individuals had driver's license, so traveling between the buildings was a problem.
Well, I tell you, it looks to me like that for these figures, if they do a good job, and I don't have any reason to believe they won't, that probably this is cheaper, maybe cheaper than if we hired somebody. Now, one thing it didn't specify in here was the cleaning supplies, was that clear?
Those would be provided through, most of the equipment would be provided by the Quality Home and Office Cleaning. Some of the cleaning supplies may be purchased through the county just because we buy everything involved, and so we have a great number of cleaning supplies. But all of the actual equipment would be provided, the cleaning equipment would be provided by the contractor.
Okay, well, it looks like pretty thorough list of cleaning. Looks like that, it looks to me like, what do you guys think?
Nothing sure.
Yes, they do a good job. If they don't, we've always got the alternative to let it go.
Right, there you go.
We can try them and see how it works out.
Right.
If it's beneficial for the county, we can continue.
And it reduces any possible expense relative to having to hire someone on the county.
Right, and all the benefits that go with it.
So, do we have a motion to approve this contract?
So moved.
All in favor say aye. Post same sign, motion carries. Okay, next item, review requests for parking spaces. Letters from magistrate and assessor personnel on pages three to five. Looks like we're going to have to buy a parking lot. We may have to turn that over to our J.C. Parking Committee and let him review that.
Put this under, no good deed goes unpunished.
That's right.
I believe he's got that started that we're having to deal with now, don't you?
I think so. I think that's J.C., we'll give him full credit.
I think you were with me, Mr. Tenney, the one maybe.
I was merely an observer.
Anyway, it really doesn't say, now, Megan, didn't you say something about that the, that there's actually an agreement or a proposed payment for some of these individuals? Is it through the Supreme Court or...
The magistrate court staff, I believe, indicated that we could be paid for parking out of the magistrate fund. That doesn't fix the issue of not actually having any parking available, but if we had parking available, they would be able to pay us per spot.
And is there any money left in the magistrate funds?
That's a good question.
That's another question, because it's easy to pay somebody out of a fund, but if it's already expended, then that certainly doesn't pay any bills, that's for sure. So, I would say we review this, and I'm not sure, is the, was the, it looks to me like we have the request from the assessors folks, 1, 2, 3, 4, in the assessor's office that are requesting parking spaces, and was the proposal there to pay it out of evaluation?
No, they were not offering any money. I also received a letter yesterday from the county clerk's office with some individuals that would like one, but didn't get any time to put on.
Okay, well, we will turn that over to the J.C. Parking Committee, and I'd say we'll just have to look at that and ponder over that for a little while, so...
Are we going to wait then until J.C. gets back to it?
Right, you get back to it, so let's know what you found out.
No good deed goes unpunished.
That's right. Okay, review and approve resignation letter from Lisa Carr, Upstate County Commission's Administrative Assistant, effective June 28, 2013, on page 6. Let me get back to my parking request pages here. Dear Commissioners, I am writing this as a formal notice of my resignation of my position as administrative assistant for the Upstate County Commission Office. I am asking that my last day be honored before Friday, June 28. As much as I've enjoyed working for the county and appreciate the opportunity, I've decided to be a stay-at-home mom again. I am truly grateful for the skills I've learned and the people I've met over the last year working here. Thank you again for the opportunity and for the experience. Lisa Carr. And we certainly appreciate her service because she's been a valuable asset to the county in learning addressing and mapping and a lot of the different aspects, because the situation we're in with the addressing and mapping, it seems like there's a lot of new construction going on, and every one of those new homes has to have a physical address before they can get all the utilities. So, Terry Joe spends a lot of time out in the field, and of course, come right on in, right on in. And Megan is in a lot of meetings and spends a lot of time, so we really need somebody in this office for the public and to meet those needs. So, we need to, I think, and except in this, we need to also authorize the advertisement for replacement for that position. So, I would ask for a motion that we approve the resignation and authorize Megan to start the advertisement process to fill that position.
So moved, and I would concur with your comments regarding Alicia. She has been a benefit to the commission and her service. It will be missed.
Yes, she will.
I'll second that, and also she has been a great access to Upstate County.
Okay, all in favor say aye. Post same sign, motion carries. We've got time for one more item before 9:30, and that would be discussion and approval of board appointment to James David Curry Advisory Board. Letter of interest from Urban B. Lake. And he says, "I understand through my brother, Albert Lake, that there is an opening on the Brooks Hill Library, and that I would be interested in filling. I live in Alexander and visit the library. If you would consider my filling that position, I can be reached..." and he gives his number. Urban Blake. Now, we just appointed...
His brother.
Oh, we appointed his brother.
Yes. They both live in the area, and it's, I think that the Curry Library Board has had some difficulty finding people because they are somewhat remote. So, they live in the area, they've taken an interest, and so they both have asked to be...
Have you spoken with the ones on the board?
I have not. We don't have a meeting until, I believe it's the 26th. I did attempt to contact Brenda Lewis, but she's actually on her honeymoon right now.
Well, honeymoon. So, well, maybe we better, it wouldn't hurt to hold off just a little bit and get a thumbs up from the board and make sure there's no problem. I mean, I don't think it's a problem, but since we haven't talked to anybody from the board, I think it'd probably be a good idea to just touch base with them first.
I concur.
So, let's just hold off on it. And as a matter of fact, it's 9:30. And we have Alan Cook from the Upstate County Senior Center. World Elder Abuse Awareness Day proclamation. And Joyce, did you come for this?
Yes.
So, Alan, oh, is Joyce going to read it?
We have representatives from the senior center here, we have representatives from DHHR, Adult Protective Services, and maybe others, and we'd like to have all of us. And I want to read the proclamation, but I'd like to share some information with everybody about elder abuse.
Okay. You all want to, do you all have something to read too, or you just come, you all want to just come up here and stand behind us? Then away, maybe Joyce won't talk too long if you're standing.
I'm going to try not to, because I know Alan's got a conference call here.
Oh, okay.
Is that from here?
Yeah, just come right behind, we're going to get a picture here, aren't we, Amanda? Where'd John go? Oh, back there's John.
He's already prepared.
He's just like the paparazzi, you never know where he's going to show up. Okay, go right ahead, folks, when everybody gets situated here.
Elder abuse and neglect. Many elderly adults are abused in their own homes, in relatives' homes, and even in facilities responsible for their care. If you suspect that an elderly person is at risk from a neglectful or overwhelmed caregiver or being preyed upon financially, it's important to speak up. Learn about the warning signs of elder abuse, what the risk factors are, and how you can prevent and report the problem. There are many signs, different signs, types of elder abuse, including physical abuse, emotional abuse, sexual abuse, neglect or abandonment by caregivers, financial exploitation, healthcare fraud and abuse. And there are signs that you need to look out for, and we would encourage folks to educate themselves on those signs. In reporting of elder abuse, if you are an elder who is being abused, neglected, or exploited, tell at least one person. Tell your doctor, a friend, or a family member whom you trust. Other people care and can help you. And if you see an older adult being abused or neglected, don't hesitate to report the situation. Don't assume that somebody else will take care of it, or that the person being abused is capable of getting help if she, if he or she really needs it. Many seniors don't report the abuse they face, even if they're able. Some fear retaliation from the abuser, while others believe that if they turn in their abuser, no one else will take care of them. When the caregivers are their children, they may be ashamed that their children are behaving abusively, or blame themselves. If I'd been a better parent when they were younger, this wouldn't be happening. Or they just may not want children, they love to get in trouble with the law. How do you report elder abuse? As difficult as reporting elder abuse can be, it's important for you to stand up for an older adult in need. Learn how to communicate effectively in difficult situations and put a stop to elder abuse and neglect. Read reporting elder abuse. Every state in the United States has at least one toll-free elder abuse hotline or helpline for reporting elder abuse in the home, in the community, or in nursing homes or other long-term care facilities. For your help in your area, and we have folks here today that can give us that information, see the resources and reference, excuse me, we'll have you folks to give us that information here in just a little bit. The first agency to respond to a report of elderly abuse in most states is the Adult Protective Services with DHHR. Its role is to investigate abuse cases, intervene in office services, and advise. We can help reduce the incidence of elder abuse, but it'll take more effort than what we're doing right now. Preventing elder abuse means doing three things. Listening to seniors and their caregivers, intervening when you suspect elder abuse, and educating others about how to recognize and report elder abuse.
I would like to speak on behalf of the semblance behind you there, all these folks. I've dedicated a lot of years to senior care, and we, again, speaking on your behalf, we are here not just to represent our agencies and our facilities, but to represent all the seniors of Upstate County. That's why we're here today on their behalf. So, I have an Upstate County Commission proclamation. Whereas West Virginia's seniors and disabled adults are valued members of society, and it is our collective responsibility to ensure that they live safely and with dignity. And whereas combating abuse of older and disabled adults will help improve the quality of life for all seniors and disabled adults... of life for all seniors and disabled adults, and will allow them to continue to live as independently as possible and contribute to the life and vibrancy of our communities. And whereas older and disabled West Virginians may be targets for abuse, neglect, and exploitation, which can occur in families and communities of all social, economic, racial, and ethnic backgrounds. And whereas during fiscal year 2012, the West Virginia Department of Health and Human Resources Adult Protective Services Program received over 14,775 reports of adult abuse, neglect, and exploitation, and which, again, is not all cases, those are the reported cases. Whereas in this endeavor, the Adult Protective Services Program works closely with the partners, both public and private, at the state and local levels, including the Upshur County Senior Center, to serve our senior and disabled adults. And whereas the World Elder Abuse Awareness Day offers West Virginians the opportunity to remember victims of adult abuse and their families, to promote the programs and organizations that serve them, and to participate in the community efforts to improve the safety and well-being of all throughout the state. And again, therefore, the Upshur County Commission, I would hope, would hereby proclaim the 15th day of June 2013 as World Elder Abuse Awareness Day. And also, I again would like to thank Joyce for her work in spearheading this for us.
Okay, you heard the proclamation is read. We have a motion to approve as such.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor say aye. Post, same sign. Motion carries.
Do you have any questions of our professionals that are here today and if our Adult Protective Services professionals would share, you know, the information about reporting and where folks can report, I would appreciate that.
We have to do that.
You can do it from there.
This big real lab.
All right, I can do that. I have no problem with doing that. First of all, I want to thank the Upshur County citizens and the County Commission for recognizing this Day of Unity, for our elder care and bringing awareness, recognition, and hopefully justice to some things that are done very cool to our seniors. Okay? We work, I'm with the Randolph County DHHR. I'm actually an Adult Protective Services investigator, and I have got an 800 number to share with everybody. Anybody that, any individual that is, has a known or suspected case of abuse, we ask and encourage you to call our hotline number. I'd like to share with everybody a bracelet that has our, it says Stop Elder Abuse, and our number is 1-800-352-6513. So I'd like to pass this around to everybody and wear it in recognition of not only today but tomorrow as well. Just pass him along.
One thing, we're all getting older, and if you make it, we'll all be elderly someday. It's our centrist.
He sounds like he's talking in the future. I don't know.
And I'm glad to have our two nurses, Charmaine and Penny, here. Do you have anything you'd like to share? I just, I know that. And our center, as well as Penny and Charmaine, are glad to have Adult Protective Services as our contact that we can refer folks to.
Are there many cases, reported cases of elder abuse in Upshur County?
Yes.
There are?
Most of it is neglect and exploitation, financial. Not a lot of actual physical or sexual abuse because probably it's not reported.
Right.
But what we see mostly is neglect and exploitation. And our homemakers are mandatory reporters also. So they report to us and we report to Adult Protective Services.
In probably our every case that's reported, there's two that goes unrecorded.
That's right. And many of the elderly refuse to press charges once a worker from Adult Protective Services investigates because of many of the reasons that Joyce said.
Yes. Get everybody's mouth. Man, they're taking a picture. You need them to scooch in a little bit? That's the word of the day, scooch. Thank you all very much. Okay, let's see. Our next scheduled appointment is Micah Hitt Harris, and it is 9:45 from Lewis, Upshur, Braxton, Community Corrections, Building Location and Related Issues. Good morning.
How are you guys?
Good.
All right. What I'm here today is, I know that it had, I think you all had been approached by Rodney. I know I've talked to Megan briefly about the purchase of the building over there. And Laura Queen, she's one of our board members, so she's here today too. It's kind of seeing where you all stand with that, if there's even a position that you all do stand with it. I was approached last week and said that we had till last Friday to either sign a new lease or somebody purchased the building. There's been two times in the past two weeks that we've not been able to work over there because the septic is still, gas fumes, Laura came over the other day and pretty much said, "You probably should get out of here and put a sign on your door because it's so bad." So we had a board meeting the other day, and we're kind of in limbo right now because, you know, if there's gonna be a purchase of the building, you know, we'll need to make it work for the time being, but if not, you know, we're stuck. Do we sign a new lease or do we try to find a new home for us? So that's kind of where we stand right now. Kind of need to know what you guys are thinking, if there is even a thought, and if not, don't think that anybody's even.
Well, we've talked about the building, and I think the consensus is that that's probably something we're not interested in participating in now.
That's unanimous consensus.
Yeah. Now, one thing that I might point out in a recent meeting with, I believe, one of the Lewis County Commissioners, yeah, I think it was Agnes Queen, and she talked about with their new annex, their building in Lewis County, that they had rented a lot of office space over there, and so they're gonna be moving out of that. So I don't know if that's something the board might consider.
Well, the problem being is we're still gonna have to have an office here in Upshur County. You know what I'm saying?
Do you have an office in Lewis County?
Yes, we have an office in Lewis, Upshur, and Braxton.
Okay, well, you know, maybe, maybe an option might be, the, the building used to be belonged by the, by the Upshur County Development Authority. I think there's some rooms out there that are available. That might be an option to check. They do have a lot of parking. I don't know how important it is to be right here on Main Street for your plans, but I do know that originally you were out next to Trade School, which is a little farther out of town.
We're trying to stay as close this way as we can, one, for security purposes.
Right.
You know, because sometimes it may just be Stacy and I there, just Stacy. And then, you know, a lot of times we may not have a male, and one of the deputies will come over and do a drug screen for us and stuff, and we're across, you know, dropping off papers and picking up stuff. So we're gonna try to stay as close as we can. I mean, but I also don't want to limit ourselves to have to stay here and be somewhere that we're not comfortable with and we don't have the area and stuff.
Well, is there, is there an effort to fix the problem that's there now?
Well.
There's an effort.
It's supposedly fixed.
Okay, supposedly fixed. Now, this was supposedly fixed before you had the smell deodorant again?
It's supposedly fixed.
Not to your satisfaction, apparently.
Right. I mean, whenever you ran out of your office and you've got clients coming in saying, "Man, there's a gas leak" or something in here, you know, we've got, and it's a sewer smell. We don't have an air conditioner. You know, it's half, it's not been too bad here recently because of the weather, but a couple of weeks ago it was like 79 degrees in our office. We don't have any windows to put a window air conditioner.
Well, I think that the fact that you can't flush the commodes is a problem.
That pretty well tells you there's an issue.
Yeah. So they did fix, we can flush our commodes, and that's great, but now, the more you flush the commodes, it's like you flush a commode and that smell just seeps out. So I, I mean, I was told, she came over last week and said, "You got two choices, either sign a new lease or somebody buys the building."
Will they allow us to rent per month on a monthly basis pending your relocation?
I don't know. I don't, you know, that's, that's a good, it's just been hard because, like I said, two times in the past two weeks, I've had to put a sign on the door and go work in Weston because, you know, we've not had, we can't use the facility. I mean, when you've got clients coming in there, and then it makes it hard for us to monitor home confinement and all of our clients when we gotta, you know, put a sign on the door.
Well, and the hard part to do is drug screens. You have to be able to use the bathroom.
Right, right.
Yeah.
You can't fully appreciate what Micah's telling you until you walk through the door and then you start walking backwards.
Right, it's pretty obvious.
It is very obvious.
Rick, you had some comment?
Tony, I want to add a suggestion. Where the old tax livery used to be on the corner there of Main and Spring is open now, and they have a full rent sign out. That's a pretty good sized space in there. It used to be the old Strawberry Festival headquarters.
Next to Dairy Queen.
Right on the corner.
Next to Dairy.
Right next to Dairy Queen, yeah.
Right on the corner there of Spring and Main, and that's a good sized facility, and that could be ideal for what you might be looking for. And there's your landlord there, Papi.
And where was the place that you, the old, the housing?
It's the Upshur County Development Center. It's the old.
Amity Valley.
Past Union Grove.
Just down on the Western Route, where you go up to the animal control, animal facility and.
Steve Foster is the manager of the building.
Right, the big white house on the hill.
Megan can give you the number.
Can give you the correct number.
Okay, I mean, that's, that's.
Well, and you might look on Main Street because there might be some other, I'm not sure what's happening across the street. You're beside you, they're moving out, is that?
Right, Laura and I talked about that. I know that Upshur, Upshur Community Cares.
Community Care is going in.
Okay.
Yeah, but we, you know, we briefly just talked about this and not really pursued a lot because we didn't know where you guys stood with things. We didn't want to find somewhere to rent, and then you guys say, "Hey, we are gonna buy the building."
Right.
So that's why I wanted to come talk to you guys to know, we gotta move forward somewhere. I mean, we, it makes it extremely hard to work in conditions when you run into sheets to use the bathroom and stuff.
How much square footage do you need? Would you say, you have, how many offices you have, two or three?
We have three offices, a classroom, and a very small, our big thing is we need two bathrooms.
Right.
Is something that we're, you know, we need two bathrooms and we need somewhere that we can park a few of our county vehicles.
I know the Development Center has several bathrooms on each of the different floors. 1757, 472-1757 is Steve Foster's number.
Okay.
But there are spaces out there. Parking is, there's unlimited, almost unlimited parking.
Okay. Yeah, and if you guys could just keep in mind, if you run across something, you know, if you could let Megan know, and she'll shoot me an email or something about some places if you guys just are out.
So when's your, when's your lease up?
Oh, it was up back in December.
Oh.
So we're not under lease right now.
You're just paying monthly.
Yeah, and we're paying monthly, but in the same token, you know, they came to me and said that last week, so I'm thinking, well, if we don't do something, they could tell us we've got 30 days to get out, you know.
I think it's gonna be hard for them to find a renter considering the condition. I'd say probably.
Where they may find.
If you're paying monthly, there's not gonna be an issue.
Well, as a board, you know, we did feel we could move forward and maybe make suggestions or anything until we were sure.
Right.
And all the county was being considered.
Right. Now, one other question I have, we were approached at, I think, our last County Commission Association Board Directors meeting from a gentleman in Wood County, and they have a, they have a testing lab, drug testing lab. Now, where do you get your, your testing done, for your drug testing?
We do all our testing over there, but then we send it to a Lear Toxicology is where we send it.
And where is that located?
California.
Okay. Well, now, what he was proposing, and I'm chairman of Services Committee for the County Commission Association, and we're gonna look at that, but he was saying that all counties could use their service, and they set that up for Wood County, but it's available, and I could get you some contact information, and you could contact, Megan, you? We could get that information to her, can't we?
Yeah, because there's, you know, some specific things I'd need to ask.
Right.
Because we test for a lot of things that, you know, some places don't, or the cutoff levels, you know.
Right.
It tests all the way down to they may have one nanogram in their system.
Right, well.
So I'd be.
They developed it for their Community Corrections Program, so if it's pretty well universal, and if it's something that maybe would be faster and maybe even cheaper, but definitely within state, I think it's something we need to consider.
Right.
So.
Definitely. Yeah, if you could give me that at your convenience, that'd be great.
So I think, I think you can know for certain that we're not interested in buying the building, and if we come up with any other places around it that's available, we'll certainly get that information.
That's great.
Because the top end, we grant lines with the grant.
Yeah, what is the, what is your top end on your rent?
This year, we had budgeted for $700 a month. However, we still haven't received our grant funds yet, so I'm not real sure, you know, how much money we've received yet, and it may be a situation that we may be able to get some approval to use out of our match account if we need to go, you know.
But you budgeted for 700?
Yeah, we budgeted for 700, but, you know, it may be a situation we could get approval to use out of our match account if we need to go a little more than that.
When do you usually get approval for your grant? As general?
This week, next week, last week, two weeks ago?
We haven't, none of the grants have heard back whether we're gonna be funded, particularly the Boca Grant, because I always heard about the middle of May. Haven't had any inclination as to whether after June 30th, I have a grant fund, so it's up in the air.
Now, I was told that we did receive money, but they couldn't tell me how much money. So we have been funded, I just don't know, you know, if it was for what we asked for or not, so.
Okay.
But, yep, I think that's all I have for you guys.
Well, then I have one more question. How is the usage of the Community Corrections Program by our folks that refer people to you? Can you give us a little report on that? Because it seems to me like that we hear from all accounts that it's way down. Is that true?
Our numbers are about the same as Braxton's numbers, which J.C. knows that Braxton numbers have been low, our Braxton numbers have came up. We've stayed, we're right about with Braxton. Now, our Lewis numbers are tripled what.
It used to be.
Yeah.
That used to be the lower one.
Yep.
Now it's the larger.
But how are ours now compared to where they've been the last two or three years?
Our numbers are low. They're also low for home confinement, too. Our home confinement numbers are low, and our Community Corrections numbers are low.
And what would you attribute that to? You cut your back to the camera, go ahead.
I, I don't know. I don't know, I don't know if they're not getting appropriate people coming through the door to, you know, to send us. I'm not really sure. I do know that our numbers are low, and it's not just Community Corrections, it's home confinement, too. So, you know, it makes me think, I don't know.
Well, you know, our regional jail bill goes up, our home confinement numbers and our Community Correction numbers go down. Now, you know, I'm sure there's a lot of factors, but that doesn't seem like a really good situation. Because the purpose of, of this program, and, you know, there's, there was so much discussion this past year in the legislative session about making changes, and instead of putting people in jail to punish them, was to help rehabilitate people.
Well, and that's the thing, for us as a day report center, you know, Senate Bill 371 passed, which affects day report centers tremendously. I mean, the growth of day report centers, from my understanding, are just gonna skyrocket. We're gonna be receiving a lot more referrals from, say, probation, parole, doing a lot of stuff like that, but, you know, our magistrate numbers are still fairly low here. Our circuit numbers are doing good, you know, Judge Hennings is referring people, but our magistrate numbers are still low in both home confinement and Community Corrections.
Well, now, we talked about this in the past, is there some way that you have the capability of tracking those cases to see how many of them would be qualified and meet the criteria for either home confinement or Community Corrections, so we at least have a gauge there as to?
Well, I guess there's so much that goes into that. I mean, there's, I feel like I'd kind of be stepping on toes with the prosecutor and the magistrates and stuff if I were saying, "Hey, you should have sent them to me instead of jail." I don't, I don't want to step on any toes, but in the same token, you know, I would have to go through and look at, you know, previous arrest records and so many different things to see if they would be a candidate for us. Do they have a substance abuse problem? Is they domestic in the home? Are they unemployed? You know, I don't, I feel that's a little bit of a touchy subject going in. I don't want to make, you know, magistrates and prosecutors mad because I'm trying to tell them how to do their job, so.
Well, and I know Megan started working on this, now she's kind of gotten diverted with her other activities, but I think, and you probably were involved in the, you had one meeting, right, with some of the folks that's interested? And so I think that's something we're gonna pursue and maybe bring in, Cabell County has a really good program. They meet, I believe, weekly, didn't Chris say, with everybody. They sit down and talk about. They sit down and talk about cases and talk about, and kind of work together really nicely. And even though it's not helped reduce the regional jail bill that much, it's probably kept it from escalating more. Uh, so what we're, what we're thinking about doing is maybe bringing someone like them up from Wood County and sitting, or not Wood, but Cabal, and sit down with all of our folks and say, okay, this is the way we're doing it, and we're not trying to tell you how to do your job. We're just trying to, number one, help save the taxpayers where we can, and number two, more importantly really, is to help rehabilitate people instead of just putting them in jail and then six months they come out and they're probably worse because they've, they've been in an influence there that's probably not done them, not, not been very rehabilitated and probably is giving them more ideas of how to skirt the law and more trouble, get into more trouble, instead of helping them, and that's the objective. So hopefully through this stuff that the state is doing and some of these things that the county's doing, uh, we can develop some of these programs.
Well, and, you know, we offer pretty much spot on the same services that Cabal County provides. If I had a solution to the problem, I think the best solution would be sit down, bring magistrates in, bring prosecutors in, bring the judge in, and, you know, because, for instance, if there's an issue that they don't think the services are being provided over there, I need to know that. I can't fix something if I don't know it's broken.
Right.
So, you know, and that way maybe I can tell them, hey, we have this program, we have that program. I think a joint meeting of everybody together would probably be the best scenario to, you know, see if there is a problem. If there's not, they're just not getting the right clientele coming through their door, you know, we could all, we could lay things out then. I think that would be the best solution, you know, to see why our numbers are down.
Right.
And we have tried doing that and nobody shows up.
So, you know, that, that would be, I don't know, that would be my, my solution to it if people would show up.
Yeah.
You know, so...
Unless we all get together and talk, we can't see what the issues are and resolve them.
Right.
If you don't have communication, you can't have problems.
You don't have anything.
Well, we'll keep working on it, you keep working on it, and hopefully we can find a place that's a little more suitable for human habitation.
All right.
And, um, thank you for all your good information.
Thank you, Mike.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Okay, our next appointment is in one hour, and that would be, oh, one of our magistrates is coming and bringing some money. So let's move down to the next item, which is...
Seven.
Seven?
Six.
Six.
Six. You want to come back, you want to come back to six later?
Six, not six, six.
Okay, review of Brooks Hill, Brooks Hill Community Building Request for Funding. Brooks Hill Community Fair, Maintenance of Community Buildings and Grounds, continued from June the sixth, meeting on page eight. And we have a letter, we had a letter from Brooks Hill Community Building.
It's the same letter that was in last...
Yeah, and it said that they have regular fundraisers and sociales to raise funds for the maintenance of the Brooks Hill Community Building and its grounds and upkeep. As a small community, we have difficulty raising enough funds to maintain the building and the grounds and host an annual fair without assistance from the county. So we talked about that, and, um, I asked Megan to put together a determinate, a list of how many community buildings we have, because they all have fundraisers, and anybody that's ever run for office knows every little community building, has sociales, and especially, I think they have more of them on election year. I know, I know the Pies sell for a higher price during election year. They're in higher demand for some reason. Um, the two things we need to decide, number one, if we're gonna, if we are going to help, um, my, this is my thoughts, if we're gonna help one community building, uh, in some form or fashion with their maintenance issues, then I think we should help them all. Now, where we're kind of limited there is we've set aside, I believe, forty thousand dollars and we, to distribute it from each, places like the Parish House, the Strawberry Festival, the Upsher County Fair.
Cross Lines.
Cross Lines, and I'm not sure, Megan, who else is on that list?
Uh, Country Roads Transit, Child Visitation Center, Strawberry Festival, the Fair.
Upsher County Fair.
And you listed, you said Parish House already.
So, anyway, and I believe Megan did some checking, and I think it was probably, I think there's a thousand dollars in there that's undedicated, and I believe that that was thousand dollars that we've been giving to the literacy volunteer, that, um, when Mr. Plitzer was on the board, said that they were in pretty good shape financially, and his recommendation was that we give that to someone else. So we took that recommendation from him. So we have a thousand dollars in there, um, that's unmarked, that's...
Undedicated.
Would be available now.
It is marked.
Would be available now. I did some quick math, and I believe we have seventeen community buildings, so if we divide that up, we give each one of them about fifty-eight dollars. So, um, that's kind of where we are, and if you gentlemen would like to weigh in on the conversation, just feel free to.
Well, I think if you give to one fair, you should give to them all. We're gonna donate to the Strawberry Festival, we're gonna donate to the Upsher County Fair, and Megan, what do we donate to the Upsher County Fair? You have it there in front of you?
To the, let's see, Upsher County Fair, we donate a thousand dollars.
I don't know how we can justify donating to some fairs and not donating to all of them. If we're not gonna donate to one of them, we shouldn't donate to any of them. If you're gonna donate to one, you should donate to all of them. I know there could be different sizes, but I certainly think if we send a thousand dollars to the Upsher County Fair and four thousand to Strawberry Festival, I think if I was having the Brooks Hill Fair, I would think that I wouldn't be treated fairly by this commission, in my view.
And I, I agree with you in principle, and that if we're gonna give it to one community, we shouldn't divide it between all of them.
I think the possible solution to this in the future, not this time, but in the future, is to, during our budgeting process, to determine what amount of money is applicable to fairs, festivals, and then try to determine, you know, the, uh, the ability and the amount that we should, uh...
Well, we have done that.
Well, but not community buildings, as you're saying.
Oh, okay.
Not community buildings.
Well, we've set aside a certain amount. We've set aside forty thousand dollars.
Right, but there are certain organizations that get to lie and share that.
Right, and for, I think there are reasons.
For reasons for that, yeah.
So, I mean, if, if you guys want to consider reducing the Strawberry Festival contribution or you want to reduce the amount that goes to the Upsher County Fair or Cross Lines or Country Roads Transit, if we're gonna work within the budget and we're gonna give money other than the thousand dollars, then we have to, we have to look at reallocating that money, and I don't think we can do that this year because we've already, we've already budgeted specifically to those, to those organizations.
And we do know the next year, the two years are going to be leaner.
Right.
Because of the severance fund reduction.
Now, I think, I think, Megan, did you do some checking? Uh, because I know, last week, I believe it was, we had a request from Create Buchanan, and we approved, was it Create Buchanan? We approved, um, a pavilion rental, pre-pavilion rental that we, they could give away in one of their, however they chose to give it away.
Silent auction or something like that.
Right. Um, but I believe you were gonna check at Curry about maybe a weekend of camping that we could give. Did we find anything, or, because Brenda's on honeymoon, we weren't able to get any.
Right.
So, I mean, that's, that's an option. We could, we could do the Brooks Hill Fair like we've done Create Buchanan, and we could give them something that they could do a silent auction or an auction or something. Um, and I think, I think that it would be appropriate because probably the people in that area that go to that fair would, some of them at least would be campers, and that would be an option to, for someone to win a free weekend in beautiful Brooks Hill to go camping. I mean, it is a nice facility, there's electric and water and, uh...
Or a swim pass. Or a swim pass or something along those lines.
Then we could do the same for Strawberry Festival and Upsher County Fair, you know, and we just take the money away from them and we could have them to...
Well, if, if that's, if that's, uh, we can talk about the budget time, if you want to take the money away from Strawberry Festival and Upsher County Fair, I mean, that's, that's a discussion we can have. I just think that, that you have to look at the amount of money you give and proportion to the impact it has on the county, and I think there's a, there's a difference in the impact of the Upsher, of the West Jane Strawberry Festival brings hundred, hundred thousand people in a year compared to Brooks Hill Community Fair that brings, the last time I was up there, it might have been fifty people. Of course, the Upsher County Fair, as they, they reported dwelling, too, so, um, you know, it's not like it used to be, the, the community's changing as far as what brings people out to events. It used to be, I remember there, that when there was a Tomlinsville Community Fair and they had a tent and they had all these different games and participation, I mean, it was exciting as a child. Every, it was in the fall and everybody brought their produce and they judged it, and, um, probably the Barber County Fair in this area is one of the biggest ones as far as, that's actually a fair, where people, uh, you know, bring your produce and it's, it's a kind of a fall celebration and an opportunity to show off your growing skills, so, anyway...
We have a thousand dollars that has not been allocated. Is that correct?
We do have one thousand dollars yet.
Right.
For undoesing, for other, I think, this whole year.
Yeah, which, which will end July first.
Except for next year's budget.
This is for next year's budget.
Next year's budget.
Yeah, I'm not sure where, I tried to get the information, I haven't, we haven't been able to connect on where we spent that this year. So I don't know.
If you're looking for a place to get rid of...
See, now here's another opportunity.
Car club.
Right, we're gonna have the block party on Main Street.
Is it like a fair? Would you call it a fair?
I can't say it's a fair, but it's a...
Well, it has to be a fair to qualify.
I did get a list of other festivals and fairs as well besides...
What are those?
Um, we have the Strawberry Fest, Upsher County, Rock Cave Fair, Brooks Hill, Festival Fridays, Black's From the Past, Harvest Time in the Hills, Main Street Arts Festival, Fall Fest, Chili Cookoff.
So we have several other fairs, too. Well, that kind of creates another dilemma, doesn't it?
Requests are many and the pot is little.
Yeah. That's right, I forgot about the, I forgot about the Tinnerton, what's it called, the Harvest in the Hills?
Yeah.
Right? That's a, that's a probably, that's probably is bigger, oh, that's definitely bigger than any of the other fairs.
Oh, wait a minute. We're, we're gonna get bigger.
Oh, you're gonna get bigger, yeah.
Now, my hat, Arts Festival is also a bright year. We only got to explore, so this third year, we're getting even more artists to bring more people downtown.
Did you read that on the list?
I did, yes.
What's it called, the?
The Main Street.
Arts Festival.
And you actually had a fair, you had the street blocked off and everything, didn't you?
With the city, too.
Does the city of Buchanan contribute to...
No, in fact, we do all of our fundraisers and with Main, so we actually got a grant pool that we enter, so we're just going for it.
We haven't heard back yet, but, yes.
It's a platform.
And we're anticipating that, but we are anticipating that, so, but there are quite a few options for these fairs and festivals to actually get active in, grant writing, and they're trying to entice them personally, but, you know.
Right.
But, yeah, Arts Festival, we're going to use it as a donation.
Well, you won't find an organization that won't take a donation, I don't think, no matter what it is.
Oh, no.
And I, I don't, I mean...
And I know, I've had, I've had requests over the years from different ten mile community building. Uh, matter of fact, I think several of those, they, our delegates have gotten money, these community partnership grants, um, money for mainly rough and repair, re-ruffing and repairs.
Handicap access.
Right, handicap access, and of course, some of them we, that are used as polling places, we, the county's helped to, in order to bring it in compliance for a polling place, and that's helped the community also, but, um...
The Veterans Association, uh, Stable Veterans Group out in, uh...
Oh, yeah, Carter.
Yeah, they're, I, I think it's Ron Fowler, is he...
Right, that's in Carter.
They are actually, tomorrow at nine o'clock here, they're getting an award of ten thousand dollars through the community participation grant that we brought, so...
So there's state money there, and I wonder if, well, if Brooks Hills talked to delegate Hamilton about getting some money from, well, we, we...
I know, we talked about that.
We referred them to him. Um, so that's kind of where we are, uh, so it seems like we've got several fairs, if we want to use the definition of fairs, or if we want to use the definition of community buildings, then that kind of, so what was the total number of fairs, all of them in Upsher County that was on that list?
Fairs or community buildings?
Just fairs.
Uh, ten?
Ten fairs?
Ten, yeah.
Ten fairs and seventeen community buildings. Okay, so how do you guys want to divide that thousand dollars up?
Well, I think we should make a contribution to Brooks Hill Fair. They've came in here and they've asked for it, even though they live in the southern Upsher County and a long ways out here, I don't think we need to treat them any different than we do the people that lives in the city of Buchanan. And what we do for Create Buchanan or Upsher County Fair, I think we all give Brooks Hill the same shot. I think we all treat them the same as anybody else. They are taxpayers, they are in Upsher County, and Brooks Hill Fair is Upsher County.
And I couldn't agree with you more. I think we treat them all the same. So if we're gonna give it, we need to give it to all the fairs. Because, because did we give something to the arts, a lot?
We gave requests, we...
So you don't want any money?
No, I did not say that.
Oh, okay.
Um, I would table that discussion, but as of right now, we don't need to request anybody.
So you're in good shape?
We're all right.
Okay, well, good.
But I will, yeah, this, the car show really does bring in not only a lot of people from local, but they could get a lot of people from the other car clubs from around West Virginia, and they really had that range street, and it really enhanced downtown. So if, in my personal, you know, I sit on the other, that, that car show would, uh, would be a great benefit to actually fund.
Right.
Now, I understand the community building aspect, I mean, because that's something that you use all year round for those communities, and it's really important for those folks in those communities to have that. That's absolutely true, as opposed to the one-time fair. But if you're gonna do it by festivals or fairs, then, yeah, the kind of program that Jerry's crew has put together is actually something that really could be used.
And maybe we want to consider for future thought to have representatives from the various, uh, community buildings, have a meeting and discuss with them.
Right now, we're using merchants as sponsors for our program. That's where all our money is coming from, nowhere else, as of this time. I mean, if somebody wants to donate five or ten dollars, they're welcome to, but we're not advocating that. And all, all the money that we raise, after our expenses of putting this stuff on, goes to charities, and we try to keep it local. I mean, it might be Harrison County, it might be, uh, Braxton, Randolph, Lewis, whatever, but it's, it's in the local area.
Right, in the region, right.
And we, we prefer to help children.
Yeah, that's good. Very good. Well, you know, maybe this is what we should do. We've got a thousand dollars, we've got ten fairs, maybe we should, because you know what's gonna happen? When these guys write in the paper and when people see TV three and they see we give money, and I don't have any problem giving money to Brooks Hill, but I think what we should do is, we're gonna be, I think we're gonna have requests from others when they see we're giving money out. Why don't we, why don't we take the thousand dollars and let's say we've got ten fairs and let's give Brooks Hill a hundred dollars, and then, then when the others come in and in and request it, then we've divided it up. That way, we've helped them, and we can help the others, too. What's your thoughts on that?
Well, that's a good thought, except you've already donated $1,000 to Upsher County Fair and $4,000 to the Strawberry Festival. And it's...I think we ought to make a donation a little bit more than that to Brooks Hill, because they are in southern Upsher County, and they do have a pretty good fair up there. And just because they live at Brooks Hill in the remote southern end of Upsher County, I don't think we ought to penalize them. They do try to put on a fair, and like you say, there is a nice campground. It is a good place to be up there.
Well, I don't think we're penalizing them. If we're...if there's 10 fairs, and we divide between the 10, we're spreading it all over the county.
But are you going to take the $4,000 away from Strawberry Festival and $1,000 away from Upsher County Fair? And if you are, let's split it equal among all the fairs, and let's just give them equal across the board. And we can do away with the $4,000 at Strawberry Festival. We do away with the $1,000 at Upsher County Fair, and let's just make it equal across the board, and we'll give all the 10 fairs the same amount of money.
Well, if that's what you want to do, we can talk about that next year at budget time. We've already budgeted this year.
And we've got $1,000 left.
Right.
That we can send something to Brooks Hill, and I think we should. If we sent it to Upsher County Fair and Strawberry Festival, I think we should. We haven't had anybody else to ask.
Well, there is one little difference here between that. At one time in the past, the Upsher County Commission invested $30,000 in that Brooks Hill Community Building, and we never invested $30,000 in infrastructure in any of these fairs or other community buildings. So, it's not like they haven't gotten something from us in the past. When they have their fair, we let them use the facilities at the library, parking, whatever facilities they need to use. So, my thoughts are, and this is my proposal, you guys can vote it up or vote it down, but my proposal is that we give them $100, and that leaves $100 for the other fairs, and that treats everybody fairly. That's what it's all about, treating people fairly, I believe. And it doesn't matter if you're in southern Upsher County, or you're in Tennyton, or you're in Tomlinsville, or where you are, everybody gets treated the same. Now, if you guys have a different proposal, then you can vote on it, but that...my vote's going to be to give $100 to the 10 different fairs, and that allocates $1,000 that we have left over.
My vote's going to be to send them $500.
All right, JC, what's your vote? You're going to...
I concur. I'll second Buddy's recommendation.
To send them $500?
Yes.
All right, we have...who made the motion?
I made the motion.
Can you second it? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm going to be opposed, because I think we ought to divide it up equally between the fairs.
Okay, there we go. Now, we got that thing. And I don't have a problem with that. Mr. Tenney, if you divide it up next year, and you do it equal across the board from Strawberry Festival to all the fairs, a certain amount, I don't have a problem with that.
Well, we certainly talk about that at budget time, and if people from Strawberry Festival and Upsher County Fair don't have a problem with every fair in Upsher County getting the same amount of money, then I guess we can do that, if they...if that's agreeable with everyone.
Okay, we have a volunteer application for Lewis Upsher Animal Control Facility, Elizabeth Gifford Howe. Did that recommendation come from Jan or through Jan, Megan?
Um, I believe it came to Jan. It looks like this individual has worked as a...in 4H before, a pre-K teacher.
Pardon?
She's worked in 4H before, and she...it looks like she was a pre-K teacher.
Okay, okay. Do we have a motion to approve the volunteer application?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
What department is that?
I'm sorry?
What office is that? Who's Carol?
Oh, Carol's our bookkeeper. She's the one that actually just did the actual numbers.
And we have a grant award for State of West Virginia Department of Military Affairs and Public Safety sub-grant number, and it gives a sub-grant period, $15,000.
I spoke with Jim Ferry yesterday that grant has been approved, and it's going to be used. In fact, I believe they may have already arrived, the purchase of 14 radios that will be compatible with the interoperable radio system the state maintains. And those radios will be...some will be distributed to the various fire departments for communications purposes. Others may be used during other opportunities, like during the Strawberry Festival. Certain radios are provided to the Strawberry Festival officials for communication, security, and that sort of thing. But, that grant was approved, and in fact, we thought we'd only get 11 radios, but we were able to get 14. So, that's a bonus there.
Okay. That's what we talked about in the meeting last week.
Last Thursday.
That's just the actual award.
Okay, all right. And that's for your information. And we have our Lewis Upsher Cell, the Cat Rid Fort. And it looks like we're down. We'll go back to item eight, review of application for Assistant County Minister of Administration, review to be in executive session for West Virginia Code 698-4. Unless there's something else we need to talk about before we do that?
There is the award tomorrow for the Veterans Community Participation Grant at 9:00. So, they have been...I believe Clark Barnes will be here, and Ron Fowler from that group will be here to accept the award. So, they invited you and any of the media I would like to.
Okay, all right. So, then I would ask at this time for a motion of entering the executive session for West Virginia Code 698-4 for discussing personnel.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. You ready there? Okay, we're back in session, and we returned from executive session. There were no disease abating executive session. And now, it's 11:00, and we have Michael Kaufman, President of the Buchanan Rotary Club, with some donations. And Mike, if you'd like to step up to the podium?
Sure. I'm here today, like you said, as the President of Rotary, Buchanan Rotary Club, for another couple of weeks. But, we had our board meeting last month. I've been working with Megan and trying to figure out what we could do to give back to the community, our local community. And we've come up with a couple ideas, and the board has agreed to fund a couple of the projects. And the first one, and we presented the check to them at the Rotary Board Meeting, is the Buchanan Library. I think they said it'd been like 20 years or something since they'd had a set of books, children's books that dealt with all 50 states. So, we agreed to purchase a 52-volume research, so they can come in and research on each state for the children's...children's books for $1,500. So, we already presented the check to them at our Rotary Board Meeting. And however, we do have a check that I would like to present to you, and I'll give it to you, Mr. Tenney, since you're the President of the Commission.
For an amount of $1,700, $1,733 for the Upsher County...
That almost covered the deductible and the insurance.
For the Upsher County Youth and Salisburyville Youth Camp.
Okay.
And that's the purchase, again, working with Megan, that's the purchase, one picnic table, one, I guess, trash can on the fixed pole, and a bench that's powder coated. All that stuff's powder coated steel. It lasts for many years. So, we're glad we can help you, the county, and give back a little bit. And if we can do it again next year, we'll be glad to help out.
We'll look forward to that. And we certainly appreciate the...Buchanan Rotary Club is good about giving everything back to the community, and we certainly appreciate all their efforts, and certainly appreciate and thank you on behalf of the Upsher County Youth Camp. And if you'd like to get a picture, you want him up behind us, or what do you want?
Maybe just a picture of you getting the check. How would that be?
Well, it's not made out to me, so I don't think it'd be appropriate to me.
Whatever y'all want.
We do all free.
Okay, just come up here behind us, Mike.
Okay.
That concludes it. All we've got left now is to pay the bills, isn't it?
Yep.
So, we will get to work paying the bills.